We're called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for May 7th, 2013. Thank you all very much for coming and would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything in its essence, for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the citizens of the perfect relationship among united cultures.
First item on the agenda is approval of the work session agenda. Does anybody see changes that need to be made there?
Can I move that the agenda be cut? Can I second?
Motion, a proper second. To approve the agenda, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is the purpose of the work session. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1301, we welcome the public to attend the county work session. There will be no public input permitted during this meeting. So first out, the next item on the agenda is to review the May 9th regular meeting agenda.
Thanks, Chairman and Commissioners. We will start off, we have the financial report, the expenditure report. That's in your packet. It's dated May 7th. It's for $1,379,573.22. One of the major expenditures that we have is, we have $180,000 in construction to do the Cory Caminos and the Conference Center remodel that we're doing. And then we have $218,000 capital outlay for our fire department to, they purchased a new truck. One of our departments purchased a new truck. So that's, those are the major items that were purchased. The rest of the expenditures are pretty much normal expenditures in that for the conference center. So let you know, we're down to getting close to the end. We've done the punch list on the Cory Caminos building, that they're just finishing up the little interior pieces in there that they need to finish where maybe a piece of tile might not have glued down properly or cracked or scuffed on the wall, different things like that. They're touching those items up and going through. And then as soon as the landscaping's done in the parking lot, we'll be doing the punch list on the front of the building remodel in the parking lot section. And then Mr. Moore will be going in and doing a fog seal on the entire parking lot and then the contractor will come back in and re-stripe it all.
That was my question today.
So, yes.
When I was over there yesterday, I saw it looked nice if they did, did the whole thing.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna do a new fog seal on it all and then re-stripe it. And that'll be the last piece is the re-striping. So they're working towards that.
I have a lot of people ask, are we gonna put a roof on that metal structure in front of the door?
No, it was, you know, I was concerned about it and I went over there one day for the races when they were getting ready to do the races, the registration in there, we were getting them set up.
Yeah.
And I actually went under there and the way the louvers are tilted, it does block out most of, most all the sunlight. You know, it's gonna probably be some time before we get to test it for rain.
You can pretty much guarantee you it's not gonna work for rain.
That's the reason he's the chair.
I'm just saying.
Just letting you know upfront.
I'm just saying that the chances of us having an event on a day it rains are slim to none.
We were hoping it wasn't gonna have that problem, right?
Yeah. We hope that it doesn't.
2014, it's raining 2014.
So, but I have been under there, like I said, it does block out the sun very good. They are tilted. It's more of a design element than meant to be covered. One of the reasons why it was done like it was done too is because if we were to attach it to the building and cover it like that, it now becomes a structure that needs to be sprinkled for fire and everything else and so it really increases the cost of it. And so that's why it is detached and it is a louvered structure.
Architects now.
So, yeah. And it will rust more than it is, it's not gonna be painted. It's a special, before you get asked this question, it's a special type of metal that rusts to a certain point and then it stops. And so it'll, it's almost like copper pantina. This metal is a special metal that it'll rust up and it gets to a certain color, like an orange or a dark orange color, and then it'll stop and it'll stay that way and the metal won't rot inside or anything. It's specially designed metal. They're using it, you see it on the highways now, a lot of the guardrails that they're replacing, they're rusted out. That's this type of metal as well, that it actually protects itself, forms a coating on it. So.
Thank you.
Before you get asked that one, if we're gonna paint it. So those are the major items. The going into new business, the first item is we've been asked to declare May 9th as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. You have a proclamation in your packets, asking you to do that. This time of year is when we usually get asked by a lot of people to proclaim different days to, to get people aware in the community and trying to raise awareness so we can get some more help, because a lot of these causes are done by volunteers in the community and so by doing this, it really helps get the word out and gets more people involved in the children's mental health issues, pretty much a lot of the cancer, all the proclamations that come in front of the commission. That's the purpose of it and it does a really good job. The next one is a proclamation to proclaim June 2nd through 8th, First New Mexico Bank, Wild Wild West Pro Rodeo Week.
Rodeo.
Rodeo is here again, June 2nd through 8th. So, this is. We do this every year. The rodeo asks us to do it. We do it at the beginning so they can start to put it in their brochures and get it around with the commissioner proclaim that week for them.
Let's make sure we have a good microphone for Randy this week so he's not squeaking. We'll test him out prior to the meeting.
I think it's Randy.
You think it's Randy?
If you get him after lunch, he's worked out, so he's, he's already gone and worked out, so he's tired. The next item is a proclamation recognizing the Cobra High School band for their musical accomplishments. This is their 14th state championship. They're actually a 2A school, but they've petitioned to continue to compete against 3A schools and they did this year and beat them. And so it took state and so this is always an honor. Last year, we had the band came in and played for the commission.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know if they're gonna do that this year, have you heard?
The whole band?
Yeah.
They were looking at two, but I guess they took everybody's number and invited five to keep it like the same.
They, they've won 14 out of the last 15.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
And out of those 14, three of them, they got the highest scores throughout the whole state.
Even with 5A and 4A.
And I hope that, that maybe you could give them a call and see if, I know they're just bringing five, but maybe they could play us a little something. Yeah, I mean, if they can't, that's fine too, but.
If they could, we would appreciate it.
Tell them if they, if they will, the chairman will sing along with them.
Yeah, that will clear the crowd. Except for the Cobra Fight Song and I still know that. The next item is Mr. Ed Wilman will, Greater Wind Canyon and Wind Canyon Neighborhood Watch to address the commission on a potential waiver request for Wind Canyon 2 and give results to the community. This is, we've known this, we've known that we're going to try and bring in the roads for Wind Canyon for a while. Commissioner Hall, myself and Mr. Gutierrez met with the group out there and been working towards and with the developers as well, working towards trying to get those roads up to standards and bring them in and possibly look at, there's some areas that could be acceptable now with a waiver, which is a process in our subdivision review, our subdivision act.
So, so tell me how this works. So, we start with this request and then they, and then they go to Anthony's group and, and?
Well, we've already talked with Anthony and we've been talking with the developer. The citizens have been working with us and meeting on their own. What, if there's a waiver request, it'll come from the developer?
What specifically are they?
I'm really confused, I don't know what this waiver is.
Mr. Wilma, if you're not in the public, if you wanna give those questions.
So this is.
Yeah, if they're asking a variance or some type of variance or something like that, that would come from the developer, not from the.
Yeah, no, they're going to.
So I don't know, I'm a little confused about what they're doing.
They were involved in our discussions with the developer when we talked about the developer possibly asking for waivers on certain sections of the road that currently meet standards.
That do meet standards?
They, they meet a standard.
As far as the materials is concerned, they're talking about.
Yeah, as far as the material is concerned.
Working on that.
Yeah, and Mr. Gutierrez is working on that. And so they're just here to give, my understanding is they're just.
This is not something you're asking us to vote on.
No, it's not. It's informational.
You're having trouble hearing that.
You're having trouble hearing? It's 'cause we don't want you to know what we're doing.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure it out.
Okay, so this is not an action item, so that's fine. They can kinda give us your report.
All right.
There you go.
The next item is a intergovernmental transfer or sale of a 2005 Dodge Caravan from Grant County Senior Program to Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department, amount of $500. As you know, the commission approved for the replacement of the vehicles that we received grant money for, for the senior program. These are their older vehicles that aren't useful to the senior program, but could be useful to the fire departments for transporting personnel. So the chief of Tyrone has talked to Terry about transferring them. Part of the process is Terry gets approval and then we have to pay $500 for the vehicle back into his program. So Tyrone will pay $500 to the senior program that goes back into helping his program. This is a, has an 87,824 miles on it, so it's not really, we were looking at trying to get some of this equipment into our detention center, but talking with the administrative, you know, we're really leery because we're transporting inmates. We don't want higher mileage vehicles that are out there that could break down while you have an inmate in there.
Makes sense.
Out in some of these stretches that don't have cell service, because sometimes we're going up the back roads to grants, you go all over the state. So, that's why he didn't try and take these and we're looking at, the fire department will, it gets it out of Mr. Trujillo's inventory and it really gets it to where any maintenance costs are borne by the, the fire funds. That fire department pays for their own maintenance on it, so it actually gets it out of our fleet maintenance budget as well by doing this. And then the next item is a 2002 S10 pickup truck that has 76,803 to the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. They're asking for both of those vehicles. Terry's gotten the approval, like I said, on both already.
The Chevy S10?
The Chevy S10 as well.
Did we need one at the maintenance department?
No, they're needing a larger vehicle than a smaller one, is my understanding, is the small vehicles don't really do much for justice. And this has got 76,000 miles on it. The next one is a 2004 Chevy Cavalier sedan from the Grant County Senior Program to the DWI program. This is a 2004 vehicle, it's got 48,000 miles on it. Cindy travels a lot on the DWI program and we don't have a county vehicle that she uses, so this will be a vehicle assigned to her department that she'll put the gas in through her grant funds and everything else. So again, it's getting them out of our budget really and into a budget that we're fiscal for. The next item is, was asked to be put on the agenda, we were approached last week, or last meeting by the veterans, to approve or disapprove a name change of the conference center from the Grant County Business and Conference Center to the Grant County Veterans' Memorial Conference Center. The one thing, there was a letter received by the commissioners talking about the word "business" being redundant to conference center. As part of us getting the grant, we, we got the grant on the office of it being a business and conference center, that it's a portion of it at some point in time will become a business incubator. It's not, the business is, in the sense that the, the letter was referring to, it's just everyday business, it's a business incubator is what that means. And so that's why if the name change is done, if the commission chooses, I, I think it would still need to be Grant County Veterans Memorial Business and Conference Center. And so that, the business piece needs to be in there, just because of it ties to the money and if we're gonna try and go for more federal money also to redo that, we're trying to follow every rule they put on us to show that we were compliant with everything they asked and that we can try and get more money. So that would be the only thing that I would ask as we go into that, is that that business is left in there, because it was part of it.
So that would be the Grant County Veterans Memorial Business and Conference?
Business slash conference center.
Slash?
Yeah, that's how we, it can be whatever, just has to have the words "business" and "conference center."
You're gonna put something in our?
Yeah, we can, we can put something in there for you.
Thank you. Probably a dash, not a slash.
Sure. Whatever you want. Underscore, dash.
Dash.
However you wish, we will do it. I just asked that the words "business" and "conference" be in the final name. The next item is approve/disapprove boundary amendment for five volunteer fire departments. The volunteer fire departments have all gotten together as part of the rural fire chiefs and they looked at their boundaries and they realized that some of their boundaries, they had gaps in them and there was slots that weren't really covered by it, so they all got together and they redid it. We've had it looked at, I sent it to Anthony's department first when it came in, they looked at it and they put this together for you. So, it matches up and then it brings the boundaries together. The commissioners are the ones that have to approve that. So I'll take a look at it. I think in the past, we did one of these and we might've done it by resolution, so I'll look that up and if we need to, we'll add a resolution that you'll be approving to accept this. But you have to, as the, the fire departments are under the commission and so you, any changes to their boundaries have to be approved by the commission. That's why they're in front of you for the approval.
I know this is an issue that we talked about in the dispatch meetings, because they were having a difficult time when they were, they would dispatch and another, their boundaries weren't there, so then the, the different chiefs would say, wait a minute, that's mine. Or, no, that's not mine. And so this is, this is a good thing, it clarifies.
Yeah, it'll be a very good map to have and then like I said, it did clear up, there was some gaps.
Eliminates confusion.
I know.
When there's an emergency, that's good.
Yeah, I know as you go out Little Walnut, there's, you have the three mile zone, but then also the city limit stops and then you would drive a ways more before you saw a sign from the PA Volunteer Fire Department saying their district began. And so there was this kind of a no man's land that wasn't really anybody's there for a little section, so this clears all that up. The next item is to approve/disapprove appointment of Keith Puffington to the Grant County Shooting Range Advisory Board. We spoke about this, this is to replace Mr. Van Dran, who passed away, that was on our board. I know Randy did put in your boxes, a copy of the bylaws that they have and the current members, because that was requested by the commission at the last meeting to see if they had some kind of rules that they followed. So he did give you those, he found those after the meeting. So this will be just to appoint this member and then at a future meeting, we'll ask you, we'll have one more member, because there's one more individual that had passed away, we just didn't get an application for it. And then we'll probably at that time try and ask for that stagger that that board had asked for.
So how long are we going to appoint this person?
Probably what we'll do is recommend we appoint him to just fulfill Mr. Van Dran's term and then at the next meeting, we can have a defined.
Set down.
What we need for people so you can pick who you want to serve certain different terms. Because right now, there is no, really no term limits on them, we just appoint them. So we'll fill this person in place of Mr. Van Dran and then we'll ask for the terms.
You know, we, you know, we've had, we've had some confusion. It's like any board that we appoint, it's important that citizens or those who participated in that activity know who's on that board, that's the reason we appoint them. So when you have a question or an idea, you go to the board first. And that's been some of the problem here is that apparently we had two different committees going on that range and I kept telling them, you gotta come together and then get together with John, because it just makes things work, work better, so this is gonna work better. It's gonna work good, so we pulled them all together.
Yes. The next item is resolution, Resolution Number R13-30, no doubt of chance to consider an ordinance relating to grocery seed tax for the quality of life bonds. This is what we've been discussing, Mr. Bennington is not here, because it's just a resolution. He said he'll be here when the ordinance, this is the intent resolution to adopting ordinance. There's been some confusion, I think in the public, we're talking about quality of life bonds. The bonds is a piece that will come after the tax. We'll use the tax money to bond, to do quality of life projects. The tax itself is a capital tax. It's a capital infrastructure tax. It's not a quality of life tax. And so it's a grocery seed tax of a quarter percent that is charged on goods and services other than food. There's exemptions for food and medical from tax in the state. So it won't be charged on that. It's charged throughout the county, anybody doing business, it's charged to all visitors of the county. So anybody that passes through and buys something in Grant County, goes out to eat, stays the night in a hotel, buys clothes, you know, goods or services is going to pay this tax. Then from the tax, we will go out for a bond if it passes. This is just to start the process, it has to go in front of the voters to be approved. There's no projects attached to the tax, we've been discussing projects.
And I think it's important to let the public know that it's not a property tax.
No, it is not. It's not a property tax. And the reason why we looked at a grocery seed tax instead of a property tax mill levy is because you, a property tax is only gonna tax the residents of Grant County and not somebody that's traveling into Grant County.
True.
This is, everybody that, Alex Brown from the city, that only, out of all the grocery seed tax collected in, in the county, only 60% of it is paid for by residents. So you're actually getting a bond paid for, 40% of it being paid for out of, out of Grant County residents. Yeah, so, I mean, that's the benefit of the bike race that was just here, all the people that came in, all those teams that came in would've paid this tax. The, the tax itself, when it goes to the voters, won't have projects attached, so there's, the projects that are being discussed right now are projects that could be paid part of the bonding process, but it's not gonna be specifically for those projects, it's gonna be for those types of projects, recreational, quality of life projects.
Hila EDA held a forum last week. We had probably 125, 130 people at it. Dr. Shepherd and the manager, town manager Alex Brown and myself, went through the, the county capital outlay, grocery seed tax and the subsequent bonds and their projects. There was a couple of naysayers, but you know, I think 3% of the people in the world pretty much don't want running water. So, you're always gonna have that. The majority of people came up to us and applauded us for the innovation of putting a project together with the county, the city and the university. People have been begging for the, for the, the government entities in Grant County to come together and do something positive for a long time. And I applaud Hila EDA for recognizing this and, and putting on that event for us. It was absolutely wonderful. Do you have anything, Dad? I knew you were there.
First of all, I would like to say that I received a lot of calls on this and they were all positive, that they thought it was a good, a good idea. The other thing I thought that the three of you stressed, which I think the people like, is that none of this is in better than cement, what you're going to do is that we, you know, we want their comments, we want their ideas and thoughts and so that's good. So it's a community project, community's paying 60%, as Mr. Brown said, so it's important that we, you know, we all have our input. But I thought it was excellent, there was good comments at the meeting and it was really great to see the community to come together and discuss something that's positive like this, so I was impressed.
We, I've had a lot of calls also, it's been very positive. I've had a few people, not negative, but requesting a rec center for kids, you know, that type, different projects, but nothing negative to say that we don't want this bond to go through. They're all positive about saying, hey, this is great, that we're trying to do something to better our community. So, I, I did what you're saying, we need to keep moving forward on this and hopefully we can get the, the backing from, from the public and get this done.
Amazing, it's a swimming pool. I got a lot of comments on those from the seniors, we're really excited about having a pool that they can work out in.
And I just wanted, the projects, some of the projects that we've been talking about right now are just the projects that have been coming to us. We've had tons of calls on the pool as soon as it shut down, as soon as the movie theaters shut down, we've got a bunch of calls on the theaters. And the reality for Grant County is we're so rural and we're a small community, we spoke to some of the movie theater, some of the people that do movie theaters throughout the state and throughout the country and to bring in a movie theater, it's, it's about $3.5 million to build a theater. You make, you lose $35,000 a year is what you estimate you lose on the film portion. You make money on the concession portion, but overall, after all operating costs, if you've had a good year, you might make $200,000. So nobody's gonna bring a $3.5 million investment into a community that they're only gonna return $200,000 at the most on. And so the only way we're gonna have a movie theater in this community is if somehow we get a facility built where somebody can come in and run and bring them, because nobody's gonna invest their money, the building will be deteriorated before they get their payback on it. So that's the problem with it. And that's why we're looking at doing these things, is we had to step up or else they won't come to this area is what's being seen. And they're not anybody's particular project, they're, they're projects the community has brought forth and if they're projects the community wants and they vote for the tax in, then they get done. If they vote the tax out, then can't complain that we don't have a theater, because we had an opportunity to fix that solution.
We have at least three, three corporations that are interested in providing services, so we'll put that out for a RFP, that's a request for proposal and, and choose the one that best fits Grant County Silver City needs. The one, the one big question I keep getting asked is where? And we will do the same thing. We will put out a request for proposals. Anybody that owns an acre and a half that you can get to from a paved street is welcome to put in a proposal and we will look at each and every one of them. We will also look at downtown. There's, there's a lot of ideas out there and I don't wanna miss any of them, so everybody will get their chance. The other thing is, is as soon as this tax increase passes, the town of Silver City has offered to make sure that the joint powers agreement between the residents of Silver City, Grant County and Western would be drawn up for everybody to comment on, to make sure that county residents, since they're paying for this pool, they sure get to use it and they don't, they get to use it at the times that they wanna use it, not when Western necessarily wants us to use it. That's why we're, we're picking up the extra money for the, for the other pool, is to make sure that everybody gets to use it. Virtually every, every project you see in here is a fee-based project. There's nothing in this, in these projects that you won't pay a fee to go use, see, play on, whatever, so they all pay for themselves at the end of the day also, so I'm, I'm going to definitely support this.
So that's what this will be, is this is the notice of intent, if the commission approves this on Thursday, then what will happen is the ordinance will be placed in the clerk's office for viewing and comment and then on the June 13th meeting, we will have the ordinance, a public hearing for the ordinance, for the commission to approve or disapprove of the ordinance to go forward with putting an election together for grocery seed tax. The last item is we went out and did a proposal. The last item is we went out and did a proposal for RFP, for the engineering services for the airport. We have a contract that currently was expired. This is the one we used to do all of our FAA projects out there. We had four companies respond, WH Pacific, Armstrong Consultants, KSA Engineers, and Delta Airport Consultants. They went through the interview committee. The interview committee ranked them by points. So you, you see that the highest point winner there is that WH Pacific. So we'll make the recommendation on Thursday for the commission. And so then we'll have a firm in place again for up to four years if we wish to do those FAA projects. They, that we get approximately four hundred thousand dollars each year set aside for us to do different projects out there. And that is it. We have no indigent claims on this. Not sending them up anyway.
We, yeah, we did, and we did have a conference call on it, and so it seems very positive that they're getting that situation solved here in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. So hopefully everything will get figured out, and then going forward, they're looking at different ways to diversify that money so that they don't run into the issues they've run into now relying on federal, federal funding. And so there may be some changes that have to happen at legislature to help put together a pool of funding for these hospitals because the indigent, the sole community provider and indigent funds affect every resident in the state of New Mexico.
Two hundred and seventy million dollars in the state of New Mexico.
It's two hundred and seventy million, and it's every resident. It's not just, it's not just people that don't have insurance or an indigent, that qualify for indigent, that get affected by it. It's how a lot of these hospitals operate throughout the state is on these funds because of the lack of money they get from Medicaid and Medicare, and so it's a reimbursement to them. And so without it coming in, we saw on the news, last week, U and M has postponed their expansion because of the lack of sole community provider funds and the uncertainty of it. So everybody's really starting to, it's hitting even the big hospital, so, in the state. So it's, it's a real deal, and so hopefully the legislature will look at some ways to diversify the funding stream, and we don't have to worry about it going forward every year.
Okay. We'll move on with the agenda with county reports, and I'm going to do something just a little different today. Judy, I think you might have somebody to introduce to us, so we have.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. There. Okay. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, John. Good morning, my fellow county employees. I'm happy to introduce Sarah Sales. She came to help us in our office, and we all know that we've been without her for like two years, so I'm so happy to have her. She's going to be helping with the ag side and the five four H stuff, so we all know that the season's starting already with the four H contests going on. And you can probably just hear me if I talk, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So Sarah comes to us from...
Your name, Sarah?
Sales. Sarah Sales. S A Y L E S. So we're happy to have her, and then we're also getting an intern from the New Mexico State Ag Program. Her name is Marley Runyon, and she's going to be joining us June sixth to help with the animal project. So we're excited to have her as well. I just got back last week from taking the four H National Land Team, they won it state, and they went to nationals in Oklahoma City. And we had a third high individual from the nation out of forty teams. And then we had a sixth high individual for that and the third high team. So we were very pleased with them. And then the shooting sports kids just finished in Raton this, this last weekend, and we had like second high in air rifle, third high in shotgun, several individuals made the top five and top three, top ten. And let's see, archery, we had a third high archer, Anthony Arciero. So we're making some, Grant County's doing well still. So we appreciate your support, and we're taking care of the residents' calls. We're getting a lot of calls on Afghan pines and different things like that, so we've got help.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Sarah.
What about the Afghan pines? I bought one. I bought, yeah, I saw you.
Thanks, guys. Terry, tell us about the senior citizen centers.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, everything is, is going well. Really, I don't have a report unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Terry? None seen, thanks, Terry. Anthony?
Anthony's been busy.
Yes, he has. I've, I've heard rumors that he's been out to Fairborn, so I'm interested in hearing how that's going, too.
Actually, I don't have a whole lot, much more than that to report. My life has actually been at a, at a pretty calm pace the past couple of weeks, so they're, actually, I think they're ahead of schedule. They should be done either today or tomorrow with the demolition portion of it. I spoke with Jeb last Thursday, and he felt that he was ahead of schedule, just by a couple of days, but they should for sure be done by the end of the week. And then I guess Earl will take care of the, the subgrade portion of it before they can start doing their, start putting in the posts for the, for the building. To my knowledge, I don't think, I talked with the engineer Monday, and he hadn't received, he hadn't received the construction plans yet from, from the building contractor, so. But I think that he was expecting them by the end of this week also. We hopefully got everything done with the electricity, so once everything gets going out there, we'll have a new service out there. We sent them some, an address yesterday, and so I think all of that's been taken care of. But other than that, I think that they're right on schedule and maybe even a little bit ahead. So hopefully if the building can come in, if they can get everything done as far as the supports for the building will, they're, they're looking, they wanted service by mid-June for the electricity, so I think that they're looking, you know, sometime in July for completion, so hopefully that'll, that'll work out like that.
Okay.
The only thing, other thing I have to report is, is our meeting on Friday with CDBG. Hopefully that'll turn out positive and we can get funded, so.
Do you have anything new on the, on the tax improvement districts that we're doing, both at Santa Rita and Outhead, what's the other street's name? Gabriel?
Viva Santa Rita. I know that Doy's been in contact with them. I think now they're going to have to make some decisions on how they want to structure the overall assessment district out there. They've already had several conversations, and I think that they just kind of have to formalize them now to see what they're going to do. Yesterday, we, there was some issues with the ownership of some of the properties for Loma Verde, and I think we took care of those yesterday. And so hopefully we will have a signature page added to the plat, and we're going to try and coordinate where we can get people to come in and sign those things. There's a couple of them that live out of town, so we're going to have to get the thing sent to them for signature, but I think we're about as far along as we've been so far, so. Hopefully I can get those today. I'll make sure and call A and B surveying and see we can't get those in today because we, we took care of everything yesterday.
Okay. And, go ahead.
She researched each property and made sure that the correct owner was actually sent, the name that she was putting on the plat, so I think she did a lot more work than we realized she was going to do.
Okay. And Anthony, we haven't put the, 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 the plat, and they want to make sure that everything is, is verified and everything's good, so. How are we doing with our survey for the new power station at Hanover?
They completed the survey. They're supposed to send me a draft so I can send it forward onto Ty Baze and Tom Head, and then we'll have to wait until, until we get their approval.
Will you get that sent?
They'll let me know so I can apply other pressures. So we can get that done.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I want to tell you, I received several emails from citizens in Wind Canyon for the work that Anthony has done, the information that he's given them. There was a lot of misinformation because of Anthony's hard work. I, I think they're coming on board now and understanding, well, you know, what all they do need to do, but we received some good comments.
Roads?
Roads? Okay. We have a meeting tomorrow to discuss, try and formalize some of the actions that we're going to take on Wind Canyon Two. I think the commissioner's talking about Wind Canyon Estates. It doesn't really do a lot of good to have roads maintained in Wind Canyon Two when the first portion of it isn't probably the worst part of the road. And so those are discussions that we've been having, trying to, trying to get, trying to identify what type of easement they have out there to see if they can even dedicate and then maybe get maintenance on that portion of the road also.
Yes, it's a mess, and I know that you guys are working through it. And, and back to the Hanover situation, was that, did that survey include the new road to the cemetery?
I don't think that that portion, I don't think that portion was done. We didn't, we didn't survey the road in. I think the reason it's taken so long, too, is that first they had all that, that portion done for the water association there, and that kind of caused some issues. Then they have to go through, there's a lot of mining claims, those type of things like that that are also involved, and so she wanted to make sure due diligence on the property itself, and I think they do a good job for us.
Okay. Because I know that you went out for a professional services agreement for surveyors, too, didn't you?
We did. We went out, we have an RFP out for engineering, architectural, or not, archaeological, environmental, and, and surveying. Jacob says we've had some good response. We have, I think he said somewhere around twenty applicants already. So it's going to be a pretty lengthy process in trying to separate the different professional services, but I think that overall, we should have several companies to choose from, make it a little bit more competitive for us, and hopefully we can get a good price for our engineers.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I spoke with Mr. Redford. He was asking me about paint color for the new building out there, and I told him just to match the other building that we had just bought and put up out there, that big, large exhibit building. So they're already picking paint colors at the rigid steel where that building's coming from. And then I'll get with Anthony, and we'll make sure that, we'll try and, when they pour those piers, if we've got time before they erect, we'll go ahead and try and put in our backfill of our dirt before they get the roof on there, so it'll be easier for us to get in and blade it.
Well, putting, putting in that amount of dirt with, with belly dumps is a walk-in the park. Putting it in with bobcats is a long process.
Yeah. No, so we'll, we'll go ahead and, and see if we can't get that accomplished, because a portion of the concrete is going to be painted as well to protect it that sticks up out of the ground.
Okay. Any other questions for Anthony?
Yes, any water updates? As far as I know, I haven't had any water meetings. It's kind of, like I said, my schedule's been a little bit combered. Haven't heard anything from ISC. To this point, we are going to meet with their, with Bohannon Houston tomorrow morning. We're going to go with Bohannon Houston on the projects out here that they're going to do the ten percent engineering on. And so other than that, I really haven't heard anything from ISC.
I have a order that's to you, that Helen is coming in with Bohannon Houston in the morning from ISC.
You have to walk through, right?
Yeah, they're doing all the projects that they've selected to look at and do a ten percent engineering, so they, they wanted to reiterate, too, if it's not a sales pitch for Bohannon Houston or anything like that, they're going to come in, they're going to look at each project for a ten percent engineering to do on it that's being paid by the ISC, not by Grant County.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Justin, what you got for us?
What we've been working on mostly right now, we had, unfortunately, after we put up the new batting cage at Fort Baird, about a week and a half after, we had the strong winds, and it actually bent the poles out there, and we did have it secured properly. I did talk to the company, and we did, we had a disagreement of the understanding of how we had it secured, and, and unfortunately, you know, the process, the thing I'm doing right now, I have Garcia fence, I'm being out there this afternoon. We're going to have him secure the area a lot sturdier than with the, the weak frame that they did send us. And I guess the frame we did order, that's the one we did order, but unfortunately it wasn't strong enough for the area up there with the winds. So I am using Garcia fence to make a reinforcement. I know at Cobre's, Cobre's baseball field, they have Garcia fence, actually secured their batting cages with reinforcement, so I think it's something we're going to have to do with that area of where the batting cages are and the winds up there. So I'm going to be with him to get that secured and make it a lot sturdier than what it was at this unfortunate situation. We haven't put up the second one yet due to the fact, I want to get the first one right. Also, I've been working on the phase three apron project at the airport with WH Pacific. We're in the process of almost trying to get that started here pretty soon, the bidding process. So tomorrow we'll be installing the new double oven at the Silver City Senior Center. So all service mechanical are going to be installing the backend of it. I also have them, and they ordered a new refrigeration unit for the walk-in refrigerator, because last year we did have some issues with it. It's just an older unit, it's getting hot in there, and the food's starting to get warm, so we have a new unit we ordered. They did get it in, but they sent them the wrong one.
What are you going to do with the old oven?
It's just, we're going to take the old one out with it. I mean, the, the structure itself is going to say we're just taking out the refrigeration, the unit that's inside the fridge. That's not the shell. It's just the, the old oven?
Yeah.
Oh, we have no plans for it right now.
We, we utilize the baton building for a party, and I tell you what, it's really, really convenient, really nice. It would be good if we could have an oven there.
Probably the only thing we have to do is we'll have to change the orphists to propane since it's, the only thing we have out there is propane.
You probably have it today.
Yeah. Well, it's, 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 it's not a stove, it's an oven.
Next year.
We don't eat a, it's a double oven.
Oh, it's only an oven?
It's a double oven. It's a big double stack oven, so I mean, if you want to keep your food warm, probably it's not a stove.
And there's plenty of room there, so.
Because we do have the old stove that we saw, remember we saw in the back of the conference center the other day when we were back there to tour the Hila people, we do have the old one from...
Is it next to the sleigh?
No.
It was next to the sleigh, but it's not anymore.
But I do have the old oven we've had sitting back there for over a year. It's just a matter of cleaning it up, changing out the orphist to make it, so it was a propane where we were using...
Something else on your projects, but you...
Yeah, but we, for a stove, we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to put a firewall behind it with the, you know, with the, everything else to go with it, so.
Yeah. I mean, a commercial hood, the one we did at the daycare was, I think, twenty thousand dollars just for the hood and fire suppression system. It's a very expensive endeavor to put a commercial kitchen in.
I think the oven would be fine with it, just the stove, I think, is another issue.
But there's going to be one at the conference center.
Yeah. Also, we've been...
Yeah, it's a conference center, but for all of our buildings, it's an expensive process to put in commercial equipment.
Did you have something, whenever he's done, I can have something else. When, are you done?
No, I wasn't actually. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be Anthony today, okay? We're also prepping for a lot of the upcoming events. We got Western's graduations this weekend, the following weekend, we got Silver's, following weekend, we got Cobre's. So all the facilities are full. We have a lot of the schools using the facilities, Santa Clara Elementary, Baird Elementary, Silver's, some of the schools, Harrison Smith Elementary, using the parks for the facilities for their fun days. They go out there during the day, so that's coming up. I have El Reto head start this week, we're going to be out there. So we have a lot of events going on with the parks, also the conference centers. We had Wild Turkey Foundation, Wildland Turkey Foundation was there this weekend. We have, the FFA banquet is here this weekend also at the facility, so we, we've been really busy. The shooting range, you know, the trap machines worked well, we've had really good comments about the trap machine, they really like it. But they also did, advisory committee did give us some stuff they wanted, you know, to do as much as we could, you know, looking at what we can and can't do with the, you know, the amount of time. And I'd like to get with some of the clubs, you know, the four H clubs, some of the clubs, I mean, they could do some of the painting that needs to be done out there, some of the little, you know, the gun racks that could be fixed, I think a lot of the stuff they could do. I mean, I think they could volunteer their time doing, as much as we helped them out, I think it could go vice versa.
Absolutely. What have we done to mitigate the thorn situation?
The which one?
Yeah, the thorns, you know, I know we call them torritos.
Where, where at?
In the, yeah, the goat heads, up there at the baton park.
Well, I have, yeah, so far, I know we haven't worked on them, but I mean, whether you have done in the past, we tried to spray that poison on it to kill them, but they're, they're pretty resilient, so it's...
They should start coming up.
Yeah, they should start coming up, so most of the time it's just pretty much a hoe, hoe and shovel, shovel.
Well, I know there's a local weed company, a weed killing company.
I've had, I've given him some proposals, the bug hunter?
Yes.
He's gave me some proposals. I've had him actually give me proposals on spraying two of the fields around the facilities, and I do have the proposals, I can show you the proposals he sent me.
Okay. Get really, really bad.
Yeah, and, and it's a really good idea for what he, but I mean, he's willing to work, work with his price, but you know, some of the, it's pretty expensive in some areas, but I mean, it's worth it, I think, in the long run, because it's less maintenance for us to have to be out there as much, but it's something we can look, and I do have proposals for that from him.
Some of his members took us standing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, got his name.
Also, last, I mean, we've been working with the MABE on the transition plan for the ADA compliance for the facilities and also the roadways corners, so it's something we're in the process of working on, trying to get it fixed, and we can get it sent to the state, actually get it created is what we're trying to do for the state, is requiring it. Also, on June, on June 15th, I just got a notification the other day from Mexico State, and the, they want to use the fairground building to do a pesticide disposal. They're doing one in the Grant County area, this, this one, and they're doing one up in San Miguel County. They do two a year across the state, and they plan on doing it. I know they've talked a lot, been talking to a lot of local farmers and people in that area and throughout the county. I did get with Judy Olafen about it, she's going to, you know, take over the reins, they're trying to get everything situated out there, but I know it's a good thing for people out there to dispose of their thing properly, I think there's an ordinance on it that they have to do it properly, apparently, so it's something they need to look into. Besides that, that's pretty much all I had.
How about the paintball group, have you heard from them?
You know, actually, I talked to Jason Allison, I think he's been talking with John more than, than I have, so I think John might know a little bit more about it.
Yeah, they, they approached me, we've looked at the piece of ground that they could use at Baton Park, they said it's a good piece. Their issue right now is they want Grant County to put in $10,000 to build their area, and so that's where we're at. We're looking at, as we go into budgets, if there's funding in budgets, if that's something the commission wishes to do. They said that they would operate it, but they don't have the capital to buy the equipment. And it's about $10,000 for the netting that goes around the outside, and then the bunkers, the blow-up bunkers that they shoot from, is about $10,000.
I'm aware. It takes that a paintball war. I thought you needed paintball guns, somebody to shoot at.
Yeah, so I guess, this is to build a professional-style course, is what they're looking at, because I guess there's a few teams around town that go and compete. And they were also looking at it to be something for children, kids to do after school in the summertime, they could go, they would have a, an area that's set up for competition, and then an area that's set up for recreation. And you could rent paintball guns, and, and they would have the helmets, they would do the instruction. One thing is they'd have to have insurance that would hold the county as a named insured if there's anything that happens. So that's, that's what they're looking at. They've given us that proposal, we're just looking to see if there's funding, if that's what the commission wishes, we can build it in the budget and try and fund it, but I've shown them the piece of property they could use up behind where we put that dirt in and leveled up that valley, and they said that would be a perfect spot, and I don't think it would interfere with people that are flying their remote control planes on it, and it wouldn't interfere with cross-country.
Because originally, they were going to come up with the $10,000, right?
Originally, they approached us looking at, now they've come, and it, the request is that the county build it, and they will come and play on it.
Kind of like every other field we have, so, pretty much it.
It's similar to all the other requests we get, but yes, that's, and so that's what it is. They've given me some information, and it's about $10,000 to set up a field.
How many people participate in this? Or did you just say?
Right now, because we don't have one, there's not, you can't really tell, they feel the draw will be high. The teams are teams of about, I think they said eight guys, and there's about three or four teams, Western started in, and the old team again. They're at the professional level, I guess they travel all over, playing in these matches in the western states. They're, I guess it's a pretty expensive sport, because when you get to that level, they're telling me that the paintball guns are $3,000 to $4,000, I guess, for these guns, and they are shooting semi-automatic instead of just single bursts, like you get the gun from Walmart, you shoot one at a time, they're shooting five or six paintballs at a time and flying out of this, and they're going through several cases of paintball in, in a competition.
You're, you're wasting a lot of ammo each person.
And just like we had discussed, we want to be able to use this for other things, too. We even discussed batting field.
Yeah.
You know, that way, whenever the, the paintball isn't going well, what have you, for that season or what have you, we can use it for a, for a baseball hitting field that'd be covered. So, I mean, that's, that's a suggestion anyways.
Yeah, no, and that's what we looked at, is, we looked at, could we do it that way, or could we even maybe put nets that divide it into maybe batting cages or something, hitting cages and stuff like that. So we've got to look at it, do some more, but just as a paintball field, it's $10,000.
Hmm. Any other questions for this? Okay, Anthony, your turn.
I didn't forget about one thing. We were approved by the USDA to go out for bid for the North Hurley wastewater project. There was some issues with the electrical easement that came in across Freeport-McMoRan property, there was a disconnect between PNM and Freeport, and Gary Berg's been working pretty diligently to try to get that solved, and so they should have that by the end of this week, which I think that they'll start, hopefully start to advertise, forbid that project at the beginning of either, the following, not next week, but the following week, and it'll last, I think, for 30 days or something like that. So they're ready to go out to bid for that project, they were just waiting on that easement to be finalized. I guess apparently, they had all the discussions prior to the letter of conditions, which was done in October, and it'd been so long that people kind of dropped the ball on it, and when they started the bid process, they found out that they didn't have an easement for the electrical, so hopefully that'll get resolved this week, and the bids will go out for that project out there.
I understand. Okay. Any questions on that? All right, then we'll move over here to the sheriff. Good morning, Sheriff. I think those paintball guys, if they just come over and apply at your place, they get all the adrenaline that they want and get shot at and, and get paid for it, and you'd buy their bullets.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Want to go over our report for April. We had 344 calls per service. In those calls, we had 144, 145 reports that we took. In our Civil Process Division for the month of April, we served 614 papers to include DVOs, notices, subpoenas throughout the Civil Process Division. They did 2,255 miles in transport to and from the prison and jails and different locations. The only other thing that I do want to report is, we've been getting a lot of reports on phone scam. What's happening is people are calling claiming they're a family member and requesting some money be sent to them because they've broken down, or they need some type of money to come visit them or stuff like that. Some of the public is, is listening to it and actually sending money. I encourage the public to verify any information before they send any money anywhere or do anything. We did do a media release, I did a media release a couple of weeks ago in regards to this, but apparently it's still happening. I just encourage the public to verify before they send anything or do anything over the phone, because they are getting scammed out of money, and we need to try and put a stop to it. The prefix number, the area code that's being utilized a lot is, is a 331, which is out of Illinois. We've tried to call that number back, follow up on it, and it's actually disconnected or changed number when you call it back, so we don't know how they're doing this, but I just encourage the public to verify before they send anything or do anything on the phone. The only other thing is, I want to acknowledge my staff for the work they've been doing, they've been working really hard. We've been fairly busy, a little shorthanded, but we're keeping up with the, with the calls and just, I want to thank them for what they do. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
I, I would like to commend the, your deputies' presence at the bike race and all law enforcement. Everything went well, we had that one hiccup, but it seemed to work out good, but the presence made everyone feel good. So thank you very much. Until the officers, thank you.
Thank you.
Plus your reserve.
All right, I will, thank you.
And part of that. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Assessor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I really don't have much. I am going to go through my annual assessor's evaluation by the state of New Mexico, which starts at 11 today and probably goes till tomorrow with an interview. So I, but I want to thank my staff for, you know, giving all the information, a lot of its documentation, how the office has been run through statute. So other than that, I did attend the New Mexico Association of Counties Board meeting in Santa Rosa. There was a lot of issues brought up there, I think one of them was the disposal of tires, and I won't go into that because, as you know, I'm no longer the board member after June 15th, so we'll leave that to the next board member, whoever that is.
Who is that?
But other than that, everything's running smooth. I do encourage people that if you haven't received your notice about you right now, you're not going to receive it because they were sent out April the 8th. So if you have any questions, we do get a lot of return mail, just like all the other departments when they send out mass mailing, just contact us, we'll do our best to try to get you that information. I cannot resend it in the mail, that's, that state statute does not allow me to do that, but they can come in and pick it up in the office. You can call office at 574-0030 for any information you need, or just go online and email me at harviagrantcountynm.com. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions for Andy? Okay. Nothing, Mr. Clerk? Nothing at all? Okay. Mr. Sari?
I don't know if I need it, but the, yeah, I just wanted to say, on the, as Commissioner Holland talked about, you just said the bike race, it went really well, there wasn't a lot of incidents, wasn't, as far as I know, there wasn't really any bad accidents that caused severe injuries, some road rash to some of the guys, and they were taken care of very well. The events up in PA were great, there was a lot of people that showed up to cheer the riders in, a lot of people downtown. It was really a good overall event. It's really nice, there was a lot of comments from the riders, as I drove for a couple of the days, and you just heard comments from the riders that they, they really appreciate that, some of them were from Tucson, and Tucson doesn't do anything like this, and it's amazing that a small town like this, that everybody comes out and everybody supports the riders, and they just feel so welcome when they come here. And Jack Brennan, the race director, was telling me that he was getting comments that this is becoming the premier race, the race to come to, that everybody's saying, if you're going to race one race this year, it's going to be the Tour de Hila, so it's going to get even bigger as it goes. We had representatives from PNM, we're down here, their chief operating officer, who is the second in charge for PNM, was down for the races and talked about how great it was. There was comments made by them about trying to secure funding going forward in the future to make sure that they're always helping fund this race, because they really enjoyed it, and they really enjoyed how they were treated when they came down here. So it really shows throughout, you know, throughout the country, we had teams from Canada, a lot of the winners this year were in international field, some of the winners were Ireland, they were New Zealand, South American, they were, they were from all over the place were the winners. We did have some American winners as well, but a lot of them were international riders that have come to race here. I know Mary Alice did a story on one of the teams out of Colorado, they really appreciated that. They're going to put links to the story on their Facebook page so that people can read about it and, and try and draw more people in. So it was really a great event over the last few days last week, so appreciate everybody that came out, the citizens that were out there volunteering their time, taking off time from work to drive. Like I said, I drove SAG a couple of days, and they were long days, so I have a lot of respect for the people that are driving in this race and also riding. It was, it was very hard. There was one gentleman I followed, he was 71 years old and did all four days of this race. He wasn't the fastest. I was behind him for about four or five hours on Sunday, but he was 71 and did this race, and so I just...
71 isn't old.
I know, young. I'm sorry, there was a young gentleman of 71. There was a young gentleman of 71 riding this race, and, and, and this person was in a sport where it's dominated by 20-year-olds, and he was riding, you know, and like I said, he wasn't competitive, but he did it, he wanted to finish. So it was really inspirational, so it was a great time done by everybody involved, the sheriff's office, I got good comments, I forwarded on some emails to the sheriff that I received, talking about his officers out there doing a great job and helping out as much as they can. We're working on budget, we're going to try and have IT on Thursday to start looking at, we're going to have a budget hearing on the 23rd of May, the, what our budget hearing will be, our preliminary budget's due June 1st. And so we're, we're working on putting that together, Linda's working on it right now, where we're finishing up numbers, but with everything else that we've got going on, I somehow fat-fingered some numbers, and they weren't coming out right, and the load didn't go in right into the system, so she's, she's fixing it for me. So Linda does a great job, she's, she's really behind the scenes and doesn't get a lot of credit, but she's the one that really puts together most of the budget, working with me and does all the hard work on it by loading it in the system and getting it in the right formats. I was trying to help her out, obviously made her more work, because now she's got to go back through and check my stuff, so, so we'll get you something on Thursday to start looking at, start talking with you, what we've got, we've done a recommended budget, and we're doing a budget as requested by the department, so you can see the differences in what that did. Other than that, we've been, you know, everything else has been going pretty good. We're going to be the chairman and myself, and Mr. Gutierrez will be traveling to CDVG meetings after Thursday's meeting. We're going to go up, we have CDVG hearings, as well as ACI is putting on their meeting to talk about how the session went, good to bad, what happened, what the changes are for industry, business and commerce industry out there. So we'll be attending that. Anthony will be at the CDVG hearings, the chairman and I will be at the ACI meetings, and as soon as we're getting close, we'll drive over to the hotel he's at and be there for our presentation of our CDVG project, and then probably bring him back over with us to finish out the ACI meeting, because it'll last longer, and then come home on that. So otherwise, everything else is, is going good, just working on the hospital stuff.
Questions to your manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Commissioner? Oh, is there a question, Tony?
Becky, I'm concerned from the county's lodging tax committee.
Hi Becky, you want to give a quick report on the county's lodging tax? You bet.
Ladies and gentlemen, for putting me last so that I got to listen to your entire work session, no, I don't come very often.
I'm sorry, I didn't have you on the list, I'll let you go soon.
You know, I keep you up to date by email all the time, I send you copies of the ads and let you know what we're doing, so that you're, you know, so that you know, but I thought that I might come in once during the year just to say hello and tell you, now that we're at the end of our fiscal year, to tell you what we've done and how effective we think it's been. Effectiveness, of course, can only be judged by the amount of money that comes in from lodgers' tax. For the last fiscal year, about $63,000 was collected. For the current fiscal year, which has two months left to run, it looks like we're going to be about $4,000 ahead of last year, which is a good thing, so somewhere between $65 and $70,000 should be the collections for this current fiscal year. And we're very happy about that. I, I'm sure that some of it has to do with some of the marketing that's being done now, both our own, Grant County, and by the Arts and Cultural District, who've had about two years now to really get out there and do things. Just wanted to give you a quick rundown of some of the advertising we've done. We've been on radio, public radio, we've been on, in Tucson all year. Albuquerque and El Paso have alternated months from September to June, and for April, May, and June, we added Las Cruces. These are, basically, they're like sponsorship things, where you, where you sponsor a particular program, and they give you a 15-minute plug, where we plug visitation to the county. And in print, we did four issues of Sunset Magazine, which always works really well for us. Sunset readers have a lot of money, and they like to spend it, and they're exactly the kind of people we want coming to Grant County. We've also, we're in the Travel Guide in New Mexico Magazine, four issues throughout the year. We added, this time, we tried another small section they have in the back of the magazine for three issues, because we want New Mexicans to come here, too. for three issues because we want New Mexicans to come here too. We want people from other parts of the state to come to Grant County and that's a really good vehicle for us. Tailwinds, which is Tucson's bicycling magazine, um, all year, we use that ad to promote the area as a, um, a high-altitude cycling destination and, and practice spot, but also in every one of those, we promote the conference center. Um, as, we promote the area as a place to come and have a conference, like specifically mentioning the conference center. Um, and, um, a new, a new publication for us is the El Paso Visitors' Guide. We committed to a full year's worth of that and to try to draw people coming in to that area up here as well as El Paso residents to come up here. In newspaper, um, we cut way back on it this year, but we added it back in for April, May and June in El Paso because it gets hot down there and we're pushing pools, so we're trying to get them to come up here for a break. Uh, another publication is the New Mexico Traveler, which is put out by Via Publishing and goes in hotel rooms throughout the state. We, the, um, the, we're always in it, but the issue for their magazine for 2014, they are featuring the university's Nan Ranch Membres Pottery Collection. It'll have the cover and a bunch of editorial and stuff, well, we are sharing that with the university, um, splitting it fifty-fifty, so we will have editorial and advertising in that and then the university's pottery will be featured on the cover, so this should, that should do well, and that's put in, in all the motel and hotel rooms throughout the state. Um, so that's a good one. The Silver City, um, Arts and Cultural District and the Green Chamber of Commerce do fulfillment for us. We've been very happy with that, they, they respond, we use their phone number, we use their, we have a website, but it goes straight over to there, so any request for information that they handle for us, we give them some funding to take care of that. And I would like to say that we're really happy with the Silver City Arts and Cultural District and the fact that tourism has been separated out of the Chamber of Commerce into this room. It's, they, tourism, when you're promoting an area, you, it needs a hundred percent of your time and the chamber has, the chamber needs to focus on the community, the downtown, the community, the businesses. The ACD can focus on tourism, they have a new director in there now and he's, I am very impressed with the job that he has done so far, so I'm looking for really good things out of them in the next year. Um, and I'm looking to a lot of collaboration with them where we can, where, because our funds are so much less than theirs that we can supplement and go together on some things that individually we can't do because it's too much money. This way we can work together. One of the things we're looking at is, um, Great Plains Airlines, um, In-flight Magazine to do ads in that and some editorial and, which goes, which will run, you know, they have, their roadmap goes all the way into Minnesota and Wisconsin and now, they've got a, a pretty huge route. It would be great to get those people, to make those people more aware of Silver City and get them down here. And one new thing we tried was, um, we, we, we have not gone into internet very much, but we did try a website called BirdwatchingDaling.com because we have, as I understand it, we have birds here that are on people's life lists. If you're a bird or you know what a life list is, and, um, they come, and Black Hawk, which I thought was just, you know, a bird, a hawk, apparently is on people's life lists, and they come here just to find this bird. So we've been promoting that bird in Grant County as a birding destination and we wanna continue to do that next year. Um, so I would also like to say that, um, with, with Mr. Hilton's help, we have gone after accommodations that have three or more rooms that have not been collecting and remitting lodger's tax. And with, with Gil's help, we, all of the ones that we weren't after, all but two are now remitting. Um, one, I, I don't know what the deal is, I, I have no idea, I can't figure it out. The other one I just told him about, so, um, I expect that one will come through as well. So basically, Gil's done a fabulous job in getting these, in, in sending letters to these people, following up and getting them to start remitting. Um, and that should bring in at least a few thousand dollars extra a year in lodger's tax fund, um, but really it levels the playing field for the rest of the accommodations who are doing what they're supposed to do. Okay? Um, so, and, um, I also would like to tell you that we, in the Silver City Visitors' Guide, we, we did take out an ad and it was totally focused on, um, this area, Grant County as a destination for conferences and meetings and whatnot. Um, and we, we did go and we counted up, we literally counted up all the rooms that were available in the county, the city and the county, all the, the number of lodging establishments, the number of rooms and the number of RV parks, and we put those figures in the ad so people would see that we can accommodate, what we can accommodate. And, um, of the forty-four lodging establishments, um, eleven of them are outside of the city limits and in Grant County. Of the six-hundred-and-forty-six rooms, eighty-seven rooms are in Grant County. You can see how, why Silver City's lodger's tax collections are so much larger than ours. They have every single motel, they have the lion's share of the rooms, but we have nine of the twelve RV parks. Okay? And we also have, um, quite a number of lodging establishments that are one or two rooms which fall outside of lodger's tax. They are not required by statute to collect and remit lodger's tax. I think that's unfortunate, but I, I don't really think that there's a chance of having that statute changed to remain there. So I'd also like to thank the commissioners. Uh, Mr. Caston gave us two thousand dollars out of his discretionary funds last year, which we used, um, to cover some of our fulfillment costs. Mr. Hall is giving us two thousand out of his discretionary funds, which we are saving for the upcoming fiscal year to use primarily, to specifically target birding. And Mr. Ramos, it would be wonderful if you would consider, um, giving tourism a couple thousand dollars out of your discretionary funds too.
Well, I, I'm glad you brought that up, but we do support a lot of youth activities through my funds.
That's a good head to bed for bringing lodger's tax.
Yes, it does, the baseball programs and other programs, so we gotta argue that point. Although I'm not against your program, I hope you continue to do well, but, I mean, it's not fair to put me on the spot.
I haven't been put on the spot.
That's fine.
But tourism is very, very important to Grant County. It, it really is, it's important to the area, it, it brings in a lot of money, as Mr. Ramos said, um, a lot of the gross fees tax that comes in is paid by tourists in the area, visitors to the area, an awful lot of money comes in here, um, by people who don't live here, and, and that's just, it's really, really important and, um, our committee works really hard to try to bring people in and to find venues that are, that are worth the money that will work to bring people in. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Go ahead.
I have a couple. Um, have you guys looked at doing some kind of advertising in the terminals in Phoenix now that we have the flights from Phoenix to Silver City? Because necessarily, those people aren't flying on Great Lakes to see the In-flight Magazine because here, millions of people go through that terminal, and so I don't know what the possibilities are to do a poster or if they have electronic signs that you can get on to advertise.
In, in El Paso, we have, we put the Scenic Tours Magazine, the Visitors' Guide and whatnot in El Paso Airport, so we are represented there and, and possibly, that's, um, a, a really a cost-effective way, so possibly we can do something like that in Phoenix as well.
Yeah, just because, I mean, millions of people are going through that terminal and they're not necessarily flying Great Lakes to see the ad in the magazine, but they would pick it up and look at it or see it as they're passing it, as they're looking for destination. Um, and then the other was, I, it looks like on PA, somebody's starting to put together, um, as you head up, I was driving up there the other day, they, they bought a bunch of these portable buildings that are for sale across from Walmart, and it looks like they're trying to set up a small campground type of thing like Rose Valley. Because they're setting them up and it's the, the ones that look like houses with the little porch on the front and there's probably about fifteen of them being set up on a property, so I don't know if somebody's trying to open up something new for the camping, you know, the people that just want a real building.
Yeah, but hopefully they'll, um, apply for a business license with the clerk and, um, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know if the clerk's office is responsible for telling them about lodger's tax or, I, I don't really, I don't think they do, I don't know if they have the responsibility to. Um, as best I can determine, there's no real oversight of, of, um, the people that are supposed to be collecting and remitting lodger's tax. I took it on myself, basically because when I first, when I first started doing this, Keith had been, Keith Lemay had been doing it, so I just, I just did what he did and, and I keep tabs on who's paying and who's not paying, the treasurer's office has a report the first of every month to tell me what's come in, so I'm, I'm watching and that's how I was able to tell Gil, you know, look, these people, they have one or three rooms they're not remitting. Um, but as far as new ones, I, I don't know that, I don't know who is responsible for doing this.
Uh, I mean, there's a, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, this is a small piece, there's a lot of statutes and laws that are out there that don't have really a policing agency and, I mean-
Yeah, there's more than, I know in the statute it says that when they're not, when they're not remitting, it's the job of the county attorney to go after them. But that's all it says, but, so I go to Gil because he's code enforcement and he takes care of it.
Yeah. And I can tell you is, everything that we go through, those type of things get pushed to the back burner if the attorneys are the one that's gotta worry about it because it's not that it's not important, but there's other things that are more important for the attorney to be focused on.
And that's why, that's why I do it. And partly, it's for me too, you know, I mean, I, I collect doing this, I, it's taxed for my business and it's, it's, um, if somebody has, you know, shouldn't be doing it and they're not, it's unfair to the rest of us-
No, I understand.
-to have them not doing this.
Yeah, and I don't know. I mean, I really don't know.
As long as, as long as Gil will go and, and, you know, police for me when I ask him to run.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I, I'd like to make comment that we do a lot to bring in lodger's taxes here. We're trying to keep our roads open so people can go ahead and continue to come and enjoy our forests. Um, there, hopefully in the near future, we have a water project where we're going to have a reservoir where people can come visit and really improve our lodger's tax. And we do support our local Little Leagues and USSA teams so that they can continue to come and have tournaments here and they literally bring in hundreds of people into this area that spend money on lodger's tax, so that is how my monies do get pushed around and, and, uh, used throughout the community and, and that's how we bring people into this area. It's not all about donating to the lodger's tax, which I'm not, uh, lodger's group, but, uh, I, I'm not against you all, we're all in this fight together, and we do a lot of things that really affect our lodger's tax, so some of those monies that you received out of those sixty-five to seventy thousand were, were part of our groups that, that came into this area, so, and I'm glad you appreciate that.
I do, absolutely. And I will say that, that seeing an increase in the lodger's tax funds this year, given the fires that we had last year and, which had a really severe effect on tourism for May and June and into the summer, um, everybody that I know had cancellations and, and everything else. And once you have a cancellation lodging, you never make that up, I mean, they'll come again, but you've lost it. To have a bump of, of at least four thousand dollars in annual collections is, is really good.
Excellent. Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
I mean, noticing what's out there and what's being dialed and what's on property, I can get with Gilbert and my staff and, and try to point out some of those if we come across them in the reappraisal process.
Okay. Thank you very much, Randy. Um, I'm gonna do something a little unorthodox today, I normally let the other commissioners go first, but we've run a little long, so I'm gonna, if y'all don't mind, I'd like to go first.
Sure.
Um, yeah, I had this really neat little, little idea of what I was gonna say today. I was gonna, I, first of all, I wanted, I do appreciate you guys supporting me for the, uh, for the role of the board member for the Association of Counties. Um, I got big shoes to fill, but I will try to do the best I can. Um, also, we are working on, on, um, tires. Uh, we've, we found a place maybe we can send them and, and they'll come get them, we won't have to pay to get rid of them because they are becoming a, a problem. You guys know my, my problems with illegal dumping and such and that's gonna be my crusade, hopefully for the next four and a half, five years. Uh, but last week, something changed that's going to make me do something today that I never, ever thought I was going to do. Uh, the actions taken by the administration at Hila Regional Medical Center, um, I, I, words, there's no words to describe it. It was disappointing that the administration were not more innovative in their action, it's especially aggravating that just a week prior to that, the board member, the chairman that resigned and the CEO admitted that they had known they had been fifty full-time equivalents heavy for quite some time. They also admitted that they found out about this in January, uh, maybe as early as November. Getting a straight answer from them is becoming very, very difficult to do. Um, Hila Regional has, they've known about this problem for, with the sole community provider payments for some time. Uh, this particular group of senior management is very skilled in presenting information in a way that would make a reasonable person think there's only one way out when there are several ways out. Hila Regional has seen their expenses rise for the last five solid years when, uh, heads and beds have continually gone down without any exercises in cutting expenses, limiting the new hiring of people. Um, they didn't even let us know that these problems existed when they came to us with these flowery, uh, financial statements in November, asking for a ten million dollar bond to be passed, which we graciously did. That will be sent back soon. Um, they've continually been evasive when the county has asked for information from them. We are having to use the Freedom of Information Act to get any information from them at all. I have to ask myself, what do they have to hide? I don't know that they're hiding anything, but I had to ask myself when they forced us to use the law to get information from them. I do not believe the Board of Trustees have been informed wholly in the plan or had been given all the information they need to be given to make good decisions. I believe the administration, the senior management team is leaving the Board of Trustees out of the loop. There are a lot of good people that work at Hila Regional, good caregivers, hundreds of them. They no longer trust the senior leadership team. Leadership is leading by example. Taking one day off a week, I mean, a month, when you are actually making caregivers choose between food and fuel or that rent payment is a slap in the face to them. I call on senior management of that hospital to take severe cuts now in their salaries. Every set of numbers that John and I have asked for, I know the other commissioners have met with them also, change every time we talk to them. This thing's gonna save this much, this thing's gonna save that much. Every time John compares the numbers, the numbers are different. For the above reasons, I ask the commission to have, to hold a no-confidence vote on the senior management team of Hila Regional Medical Center on Thursday's commission meeting. I don't know if we do that by resolution or by letter or just a vote. Uh, I, I, I hope you guys can figure that out in the next few hours so we can get that on the agenda. You don't have to decide now. Um, but I, I, Mr. Manager, I am asking for that to be on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Well, I, I totally agree. Um, something has to be done. We've, I personally met meetings after meetings with different other elected officials, our representatives, our senator, uh, and, and people from, uh, Hila Regional. Our, uh, administration at Hila Regional is, is suffering due to not sharing information and, uh, making our, our people that, that work at Hila Regional suffer for, for, uh, their incompetence is, uh, is a big deal to me. And I think all of us know either a relative, a friend, uh, that, that got affected by, by these cuts. And when you're, when, when I got the report from, uh, the administrator right before the information was released, I was told that there was going to be some cuts made to people's time, but I never imagined it was gonna be fifty percent of their time was, uh, was going to be cut. And that was a real big surprise to me when I heard it from individuals out in the, in the workforce that gave me a call from Hila Regional. And it was a big disappointment to me. Um, there was other options and hopefully those options are considered by our, uh, by the Board of Trustees that run the hospital. I totally agree with you, Mr. Chairman, we need to do something.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
What's been said is about an institution, and I've said this before, probably has more impact in southwestern New Mexico than any other institution. People have come here to this community many times because of our hospital. A lot of us remain because of our hospital. We depend on that hospital and we depended, past tense, on the administration of that hospital to make sure that it is ran in such a way that we can depend on it tomorrow. And not only that, it's one of our major employers. And not only that, it's one of our major employers. And my gosh, they in their own building have a mental health unit. What have they done to these employees and their families? What have they done to these, to the merchants that depend on that money coming in? They've let the southwestern part of New Mexico down. Shame on you. You know, the other two commissioners, I'm sure, have received the same letters, same emails that I've received. Heart-wrenching letters. They're not cussing anyone, they're just telling us about, they're just telling us about everyday life. Cutting half, you don't cut out a movie or you don't cut out maybe a trip to El Paso or something, you cut out their home. Where they're gonna live? This is serious. And as one administrator told me, I get a three-day weekend once a month. And the others, seventy, seventy of them are giving up possibly their home and they get a three-day weekend. That's a slap in this, the citizens of this community and the communities in southwest, it's a slap in our face to take it that lightly. No confidence. I wish we could do more, but certainly I agree with it a hundred percent. And I thank the chair for his comments and also to Mr. Ramos.
So since I took y'all's time, do you have anything else you wanna talk about today? Or should we just adjourn? I think what I've got can wait till-
Yes, sir.
I just, I wanna say I apologize to Commissioner Hall because when he came to me and he was running, he asked me if we had any drama and I told him no. And it's been nothing but drama since he got here, so I think it's the catalyst.
True story. It's my fault, right?
So I wanna apologize that I lied to him when he, when he came to me when he was running and asked that question because it's been nothing but drama.
All I have to say about that is that we didn't have drama before he got here.
Yeah. I'm not going there, I'm just saying.
I take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, second, five to say no.
Aye.